I would like to look my person. It's an attractive person. Some folks gave us their name and email in order to be sent a copy of the amendment as soon as it was available. We will see the finalized amendment sometime in the next few minutes, but it is still not here. The reason for that is there's a lot of negotiation relative to what we all want to see, what both sides of this issue want to see, and how can we best achieve a compromise. Representative Jones, come on. So, the amendment that comes forward will have as many copies as possible. We'll try to achieve some of that. The reason that it has taken so long in part is because yesterday we were in session from, essentially, 9:00 AM.
Today, so now you have a new bill. The only thing that we really have is just this number, but a whole new complete bill. So, just drop it and better luck next time.
And I appreciate your comments, but it is still within the possibility to present the amendment to the subcommittee. The subcommittee is officially myself, Representative McNamara, and Representative Flanders. And when we're discussing the physical, we have it in front of us, we will take a vote and that will go to the full committee next Tuesday, and then it will go to the full House within the next few weeks after that. Because it is a second committee bill, so if it passes the House when it goes to the full House, then it will, it will go to the Committee for Criminal Justice. I think as long as every one of the committee members, Ms. Marling, has a copy, then we can go from there.
Sounds good. It's like there are 11 committee members.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Representative Tecker's on her way back.
And Ms. Andrews O'Hara as well.
And I can always make more, but I hopefully made it up.
I was just gonna say, if the law already exists, why bother making a state law? Is that just a back way to get what you want afterwards?
No. What, the, the goal is to define what is and what is not in the effort to talk about expanded background checks within the state.
But isn't it already illegal? If I sell a known felon a gun, I'm committing a crime because I'm selling a known felon a gun.
I appreciate that. Let me tell you what is within what we are talking about as expanded, that would require an expanded, or a background check, that is not required now. And that would be at all commercial sales. So, commercial sales with a gun show, internet sales, and any commercial effort at a sale.
If they already have to do background checks?
Not for a gun owner who goes to a gun show and is wanting to sell or cull some of his private, privately owned guns. As long as a gun owner does that every once in a while, it's still legally allowed. But any sale, at a gun show or a commercial sale within the state, when I'm not interstate, is already covered by federal law. What we're talking about is within the state.
But I've bought into gun before I had a gun show from a private person, and they still did the background check. I paid a dealer to do the paperwork, did the background check.
And that seems reasonable, but it is not required. This bill requires it. Yes, sir.
Again, it's already a federal offense to know and sell to somebody you don't know. So, why keep duplicating what's already on the books?
And I appreciate that perspective. There are those of us who believe that putting in law the requirement will make it more responsible and more, and will protect more of our citizens. And that's what this bill intends to do. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know the original bill, the original language. Where did that come from? I mean, I know that Representative Andrews O'Hara is the sponsor and opposed it, but where did this language come from originally?
Um, there are a number of advocate groups within the state that are working on, trying to work on the issue of gun violence throughout the state, throughout the country. And those are the advocacy organizations who have helped contribute to the language that came in on the first bill.
So, she didn't write this bill herself? Other people wrote it?
That is the case with many of the pieces of legislation that come to us, either from either side. There are advocate organizations or private citizens who say, "This is something that I want, and this is what I'm suggesting we do." Sometimes they offer language, and sometimes they don't. And so, I think I understand what you're saying, but the intent of those is... Yes, sir.
I think they're just trying to get a foothold for Michael Bloomberg and his group. That's what I think's going on here. And, and the thing is, he's tatted in New Hampshire for the past year and a half, brought his bus here, his people. We don't have the problems in New Hampshire that we have in other states. I mean, so, but he's trying to get a foothold. And that's what I think's going on here. So, I, I think you're wasting a lot of time here.
I appreciate that. There are, there are others who disagree with you, and that's why the amendment is before.
Sir.
The, I understand what you're trying to do with this, but a specific concern what I have is the part where it says, "Or pursuant to an offer to sell by a firearm, by a firearm that took place at a gun show, or pursuant to an advertising, posting, listing, or display." So, say I had a Facebook page with just my immediate friends that I've known, and I say, "Hey, I have a pistol." If any of those people responds to me in that sense, I am going to be a criminal. Is that what you're saying?
Well, responding to you is not saying I'm gonna be a criminal, but if you were to go through an internet process to transfer or sell a gun, then this bill would require that you go through a background, that that transaction go through that area. If you want to do it outside of your circle of friends, Facebook, you know, I think I have now 900 friends.
I don't have many.
Doubt it.
So, I think that this bill intends to make private sales, private sales. Before, before we go further, please.
Sure.
Representative, any of the people on the committee but foremost Representative McNamara or Representative Flanders, do you have questions? Shall we go through the language of the amendment just to see what's there?
Okay.
All right. So, there is no, there are, there is no preamble, there are no legislative findings. This amendment replaces the entire bill. And it defines its purpose to require commercial firearm sales and transfers to New Hampshire to be processed through a licensed firearm dealer who will conduct a background check and create a record of each sale. The General Court believes this law will protect public safety by helping to keep guns out of the hands of felons, domestic users, and the dangerous element of the area. The General Court will leave that. It's this bill test. And relative to definitions, it talks about commercial sale. Dr., I can't remember your last name.
Hannity.
Dr. Hannity has pointed out that, you know, if this is pursuant to an offer to sell or buy a firearm that took place at a gun show, or pursuant to an advertising, posting, listing, or display. So, it really is defining all commercial sales, however that might happen if Representative Sandler goes out and puts up a poster on the telephone pole in her neighborhood and says, "I've got a couple of shotguns and I want to sell them. Give me a call. I'm gonna go through this language and then I'll take questions." That would be considered a commercial sale. Firearms is as defined in the bill originally. Individual means a natural person. Law enforcement is, is as it was before, as is licensed firearm dealers in the previous And person, because individual is natural person, but person is further defined as any group or organization, or a stock company, or other entity. Prohibited person means any person who is prohibited from owning or possessing a firearm pursuant to 18 U.S.C. Section 922(b) or pursuant to state law. So, sir, as you have questioned, that is the federal firearms definition. Firearms sale to be conducted through a licensed dealer, no person shall engage in the commercial sale of a firearm unless the person is a licensed firearm dealer, the purchaser is a licensed firearms dealer, or the requirements of paragraph two are met. And paragraph two says, "If neither party for the stretch of firearms to the transaction is a licensed firearms dealer, the parties to the transaction shall complete the commercial sale through a licensed firearms dealer as follows. The seller shall deliver the firearm which is currently happening in an interstate transaction, except as provided in sub-paragraph A, the dealer shall comply with all requirements of federal law and state law." Let's just read that to the dealer. He has to follow all the requirements of federal, state, and local law that would apply if the licensed dealer was selling the firearm from his or any authority to purchase it, including, if not limited to, conducting a background check on the purchaseor, which shall include a check of the, and a C.S. in compliance with all federal, state, and local laws. If the transaction is not prohibited, the dealer shall deliver the firearm to the buyer after all legal requirements are met. If the dealer cannot legally deliver the firearm, the dealer shall return the firearm. The dealer may require the purchaser to pay a reasonable fee. The exceptions. This chapter shall not apply to a non-commercial, private sale or transfer or exchange of a firearm between individuals, provided neither party to the transaction is a prohibited person. If the status of neither party's eligibility to own or possess a firearm cannot be obtained, the transaction shall be completed through a federally licensed firearm dealer. Penalties have been reduced due to the fire not authorized and a state or county or local law enforcement agency to establish or maintain a recipe of firearms sold or transferred in accordance with this chapter. Further discussion, Representative Gold.
Thank you, Representative Butler. Two questions. First one is, in that this has criminal penalties and a fiscal note, will this be going to both criminal justice and the fiscal committee?
It will not. It will only be going to criminal justice.
Follow-up?
And if it passes the House, it will go to the Senate, and there will be plenty of time to discuss those issues.
Oh, follow-up, please?
Please.
The original bill had a $1 million cost over the next four years. As this bill has a fiscal note, likely will, will that fis, will this go back before the House? If there's a fiscal note, we've got to account for it in the budget, and we typically send those to finance.
That makes sense, and I'll pursue that as best I can. And I'm sure you will too.
Okay.
Um, definitions.
Yes, would you state your name so that we know?
My name is Susan Olson with an E.O.L.S.E.N. Under definitions, I'm curious where you got the definition firearm. Can you cite the source?
I cannot. I'll get it. And I know I have your email.
And I'm happy to give it to you again.
Just a minute, sir. I want to write this note so I don't forget. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Jesse Bartlett, and this bill more or less implies that there's a problem. Do you have any statistics that could, um, stack that up? And plus, I'd like to thank you for serving the state of New Hampshire.
Thank you very much. In the hearing and in information that's come to us, in the many messages and emails that we've gotten, there have been instances in which there are firearms, violence within the state. And we have also heard that the background checks nationally have been able to prevent up to 2 million people from obtaining guns when they are in a prohibited class. Logically, it makes sense that if we help to close those places where background checks are not being done, especially when people don't know each other necessarily, it might help to capture somebody who shouldn't have a gun. And in whatever way we can do that, it makes, to me, it makes sense.
Thank you.
Sir.
I'd like to ask, why is this not a violation of our state and federal constitutional rights and our property rights?
I appreciate your perspective, and you and many other people believe that this is a violation, but I have been told by people who are as equally expert in interpreting the Constitution that this is not unconstitutional. And that disagreement may always exist. Sir, what was your name?
Me, Carl Dow.
Sorry, Carl.
Carl Dow.
Carl Dow. Doctor?
Thank you. Johannan. Page two, line 16, accept that the seller may remove the firearm from a business premises of the licensed dealer while the background check is being conducted. According to federal law that the, all FFF, federal firearms licensed holders must follow, that is illegal. And this was mentioned by Attorney Penny Dean during the last hearing.
Thank you for that, and I will explore that, and if it needs to be taken out, it will.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that one. What, what, what part of line 16 is illegal?
The seller may remove a firearm from a business premises of the licensed dealer while the background check is being conducted, and they sign into a book and they cannot remove it. So, the transaction is complete, so it's a violation of federal law.
Thanks. Sir.
Sam Coons. Also, in line 29, says if the dealer cannot legally deliver the firearm to the buyer, he will return the firearm to the seller and transfer it to the buyer shall not take place. When you take a gun in and go through a dealer, they have to transfer that into their inventory. The sale cannot go through. He has to have another background check to return it to you.
Even if you have given the gun to him?
That's right. I just went through this because I took a gun in to put it on consignment. It never sold, and he had to go through a background check to return it to me.
Thank you.
So, there's already a lot of background checks being done. All we're duplic, all we're doing with this bill is duplicating existing law and trying to create a problem where no problem exists.
I understand what you're saying. Sir.
It's quite obvious, looking at this, you don't really know what you're doing. So, as far as I'm concerned, you screw the old bill out, you have a new bill, you pass your filing date of last November, so really this bill's illegal.
Okay.
Okay?
And I'm trying to explain to you why it isn't, and we're not going to agree on it.
Yeah, well, you seem to do whatever you want, break the law and set the rules as you go along, just sort of like Obama. So, now, you show me in the Constitution where the bill writes, "A subject to judicial review." Show me.
Okay. I'm not gonna show you because...
But you can, because it isn't in here.
Because the two of us are never going to agree. Representative Lee.
Hold on. Sir, what's your, sir, what's your name?
J.J. Valera.
I believe in this bill, we're creating a different kind of transaction, not the reference of a, a sale through a dealer, like a consignment type of sale. That's really the dealer making the sale. That's not, let me finish, please. The dealer's making the sale, not you. What we're talking about here is we're creating a new type of transaction where you and the buyer are asking the dealer to perform a background check for you, but that's his only involvement in the process. And so, I believe, and certainly we can get some, some feedback from other sources, and we have some law enforcement people here that may have some input on it too, but I believe it's not the same kind of transaction, and it shouldn't require going back through a second background, a return background check.
Thank you. Representative Jones?
Yes, I noticed that the penalty has been brought down from a class B felony to a class B misdemeanor. Could you remind me what that entails, being guilty of a class B misdemeanor? What's the worst that could happen to you?
A fine, and I think it's a fine up to $1,000.
And doesn't it go on your record, and then you can't get a job?
Um, I believe that it does go on your record. Representative Delisaro?
If I may, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you're, am I getting this right? What you're doing is forcing people to spend more money now when they're selling a gun, which the law right now says, "If, what, some of my guns, if I want to sell to one of my constituents, say Dana," I know him, I've known him for years. I cannot do that no more. I've got to take him and go to the gun store?
No, no, no.
I apologize, that was another hearing.
No, that's okay. We have taken out the issue relative to private sales and to private transfers, so that you can sell to Dana. The only responsibility is that you each know that you're not members of a prohibited class. So, private sale, private transfer no longer requires a background check in New Hampshire if this bill were to pass.
Then does this bill here turn over information of, of New Hampshire residents over to the federal government?
It changes nothing as, as far as background checks are, are conducted now, so that background check, background checks documentation are kept within the licensed firearm dealer and go nowhere else. And the law at the end, Senator Pierce wanted to make sure if this were to become law, it would clarify that there would be no registration or no registry.
The reason why I've been asking the question, because on line number seven, "Commercial sale," means a sale, transfer, exchange of a firearm that takes place at or on the curfits of a gun show, or a person to a officer to sell or buy a firearm that took place at the gun show. Right now, our gun shows are already filling out filing forms.
Um, it's not required. So, there are some, as one gentleman talks about, that, uh, state law, it's not required. It may be that there are responsible sponsors of gun shows who are requiring for all of those to sell their guns, but it is not required. Representative Gold?
Thank you, Representative Butler. Um, just to clarify the record, a transaction between a dealer and an individual at a gun show does require a background check. And most of the tables at gun shows, in fact, have dealers at them, because you have to go spend money to be there, you have to be selling, buying and selling enough firearms to justify the table. Okay? Very few of those tables actually have individuals who do this as a hobby who are not licensed, because those individuals can't buy on the wholesale market, and there's no business opportunity. And then, as a secondary, I just checked the class B misdemeanor, it's a 1,200, up to a $1,200 fine. Okay? Correct, no jail time, and class A is, is no jail time. One other comment, New Hampshire is the safest state in New England. Okay? Substantially safer than Massachusetts, and this is FBI data that I'm quoting, and Connecticut. Okay? Connecticut has a violent crime rate 300% of that of New Hampshire. Why do we want to start to enact the laws like that, that those are in Connecticut, and go that direction when we already have the safest state in New England?
I appreciate your comments. Yes, sir.
My name is Maryland Reeth Meredith, and I was wondering who the constitutional scholar is that you spoke with about the Second Amendment rights in our state?
Um, we have heard from attorneys who are members of the House and of the Senate, and we have gotten rulings through those, through those representatives and senators, and that's what we, that's in part what we're relying on. Yes, ma'am.
Could you tell me their names, please?
Um, right now, it's through the two primary sources are Representative Rogers, Catherine Rogers, and Senator Pierce.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let's just say we...
I'm sorry that we talked about it being a second committee. In fact, the Criminal Justice Committee, if it were to get through the House the first time, will hear the bill, and will hear the bill on narrowing on the issues of penalties. It will not go through the issues of policy again. If it were able to get through the House a second time, because it will go to the floor again, then it will go to the Senate, where all of these pieces will be deliberated again and have the potential for being changed. If it were then able to go and be approved by the Senate, it would go to the Governor's Office. And the Governor's Office reviews all the bills for their legality, for their constitutionality as well. So, there are several pieces. Um, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask for a vote from the subcommittee in just a few minutes, so we'll take a few more comments and then we'll close the hearing. Representative Bellisar?
Just real quick, isn't the Criminal Justice Committee, is the Policy Committee, that should actually handle this, this bill?
I think you'll have to talk to the leadership about it. Sir, I'm sorry, I don't see an answer.
Thank you, Chairman Butler. It's Mike Solvia, representative from Belmont. My concern with this bill, and I haven't had a chance to attend the original hearing, is that it's going to build kind of a false sense of security. It's not really going to impinge that much on criminals that want to get hold of guns, or even mentally ill people. So, it's just a false sense of security, and I, I think it fails in that respect, and should probably be ITL, my opinion. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that perspective, and I know even Representative Coleman and I have had a conversation about the, the violence that our society is experiencing, and the fact that none of us think that that is good or positive for our country, or for our state, or for our communities. And that we want to work to, to diminish that violence in whatever way we can. Some of us believe that this is not just a feel-good bill, but that it is an incremental move towards helping to protect our citizens.
Thank you. I'm sure you don't want to catch up anybody that's not a criminal in this bill. So, would you be amenable to putting a line in granting anyone who is caught violating this, that if both parties are not prohibited persons in any way, that, that is a way to get immunity if, from prosecution after the fact? That way, they're legal people otherwise. What if they made a mistake and they got caught, and they get in trouble for this because someone put an ad on their Facebook page or a church flyer? But they're both legal people that are not, not prohibited in any way. Would you be willing to do some kind of exemption for those situations to keep the innocent?
I hear what you're saying, and I doubt that we're gonna make that change in this bill, but if it goes to criminal justice, and that's in the penalty piece. And I know that some will bring up the issue in criminal justice of whether or not this should go back to a felony. And so, there will be discussion around that issue, and it could be changed at that time. Sir, did you have another comment?
Yes. 2473 Federal Farm. The federal government is now rebreaking law, descending ATF agents into copying the dealer's records. So, I just thought it'd involve me on that. So, that means that this bill, the records are gonna be copied if you do a deal, a transaction. The ATF is already violating federal law, so 1968 Hunter Hill Act, you're not supposed to do that, you're already doing it. So, you can't trust the government.
Representative Wright?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to address the, the issue. The bill reportedly is to improve safety and reduce gun violence. As Representative Paul mentioned, New Hampshire's the safest state. And a lot of these gun violence incidents, we're so much about, Virginia Tech in '07, Fort Hood in '09, Banglinton in '09, D.C. Navy Yard in '13, Aurora, Colorado in '12, Tucson, Arizona in 2011. All of those people passed background checks and then went off the rails after that. The witnesses here from Newtown stated that this legislation would have done nothing to prevent... to prevent that, and most of the rest of the gun violence that we see, so much publicity, has, has been done by people who never would have come up to this situation to require a background check, and they had simply stolen. They were criminals, or they were crazy criminals, one or the other. So, I would submit that this is not going to accomplish its stated purpose, and it's therefore an unnecessary piece of legislation. I think that what's happening right now, we're already the safest state. Why would we get more regulations to turn us in the direction of Connecticut and make us less state, less safe, which is what they are experiencing?
As most of you probably know, even if the Subcommittee passes this amendment, it will go to the full committee. It's not assured that it will pass the full committee. If it doesn't, and even if it doesn't, it will go to the full House, and these are the arguments that you will hear on the floor of the House, and we will all be able to ask your representatives to be on the record on that. Representative Butler? Sir.
Yes, just to clarify, Representative Williams, believe, I trans, I sold a gun to a friend of mine. We went to go to a dealer initially because we weren't positive of the process. One of the reasons they were going to charge us was because they had to take that gun into their inventory. That was one of the reasons for the extra cost. So, anytime you go through a dealer, they have to transfer that gun into their inventory to be able to handle it and do the background check.
Thank you for that clarification. I would like a sense of something, but obviously there are changes. The multiple offenses as defined in the third and fourth lines of the penalty might be based on being pre-armed. And the lines 16 and 17, accept that the seller may remove the firearm, needs to be clarified, and the issue of the gentleman just raised relative to taking the gun into the inventory and therefore doing a background check on both the buyer and the seller, or if it's returned to the seller, has to be done again, needs to be clarified. But with those changes, would you, and what will happen is, before the Executive Committee on Tuesday, the, the care or amended amendment that you see before you will be done well before the Executive Committee meets again, and anybody who wants it, we will give it to them, when it is completed and out of the Office of Customs and Services. We will meet again, and we will have a formal vote on the amendment before it goes to the Executive Committee. We will meet again on Tuesday, I don't know what time, certainly before the executive session. Representative McNamara, would you sup, oh, I'm sorry, Representative Flanders, I have a question.
What in this bill is there that is not already under federal regulation? What is different from federal regulations?
It's intrastate, so, um, within the state, a gun owner can go to a gun show and sell his or her guns, culling their, their collection, without having to go through a background check. Private sales, no, commercial sales, so within, on the internet between you and me, I don't know you, but you respond to an internet ad that I put in Craigslist or armslist.com, and you say that you want to buy my gun. That currently does not require a background check, since we are both residents, citizens residents of this, of New Hampshire, but this would require it. So, it's those commercial transactions that would require a background check. As we have discussed it, Representative McNamara, would you support this amendment?
Well, I'd just say first, I've heard a great deal of information from many, many groups of people, some of people who were here this morning. I've heard a lot of emotional opinions, I would call them, from both sides. I've also heard some factual, you know, information from both sides. And I had some concerns about the bill as it was originally written then, and a lot of the notes that I had made last Tuesday have been addressed here, and with those minor changes you talked about here, I would be willing to support this because I think the law abiding citizen of New Hampshire is not affected by this, and we are taking up some of the problems that we see with the person who is not law-abiding. So, I would support this amendment as I see here now.
Thank you. Representative Flanders? I'm sure my problems are-- Thank you. I'm going to close the hearing on the Subcommittee on House Bill 1589, and we will revise the amendment, and it will be available as soon as we can do that. Representative Holt?
Thank you, Representative Butler. Is it possible that this be available by 5:00 p.m. on Monday?
I will make every effort to do that. The hearing is closed. If you want to talk to us outside of the hearing, you're welcome.